If it's agreeable with you, could I ask Vice Chair Lee to proceed with the proceed with the invocation and pledge while we determine if we can help Commissioner Godwin?
Yes, sir, that's fine.
Vice Chair Lee?
Good evening, everybody. At this time, Commissioner Kivitt will have our-
Good evening. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight grateful. We're grateful for all the many blessings, especially the blessing of life. We're also grateful that we live in the land of freedom and plenty. Lord, in these unusual times, we realize that all things are possible only through your grace and mercy. We ask for your wisdom and understanding as we address the business of the county tonight. Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. And Susan Holder will lead us in the pledge.
Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Lee and Ms. Holder and Mr. Kivitt. Mr. Rayner, any luck contacting Commissioner Godwin?
I'm on.
Oh, good gracious alive. That's wonderful news, Commissioner Godwin. Welcome, welcome.
Yes, yes.
Ms. Holder, would you please call or roll?
Yes, sir. Chairman Wooton?
Present.
Vice Chairperson Lee?
Present.
Commissioner Parker?
Present.
Commissioner Godwin?
Present.
Commissioner Kivitt?
Present.
You have all members accounted for, a core misestablished, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Holder. At this time, is there any additions to the agenda?
We would like to add item 4D, which was sent to all of the commissioners this afternoon by email. And it is a budget amendment and note to, and an agreement to authorize the county manager to execute an engagement agreement with the firm of Brooke Pierce McLendon Humphrey and Leonard to serve as legal counsel. The vice counsel about the potential margin of the Sampson County school systems and approve a budget amendment in the amount of $25,000.
Is there a motion to accept the agenda with the add-on, Mr. Calzey?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the agenda with the add-on.
Second that, second that.
All right. Miss, thank you both. Thank you, Commissioner Kivitt, and thank you, Commissioner Godwin. Ms. Holder, would you call or roll?
Certainly. Chairman Wooton, how do you vote?
In the affirmative.
Vice Chairperson Lee, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Commissioner Parker, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Commissioner Godwin, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Commissioner Kivitt, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
You have a unanimous vote, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you so much, Ms. Holder and commissioners. At this time, I believe that I would like to recognize our Health Director, Ms. Wanda Robinson, for a COVID-19 update.
Thank you so much for allowing us to speak this afternoon. Kelly Parrish is here with me, and we're going to give you a quick update as to what's happened over the past couple of months. So as of Friday, June 26th, it was now mandatory for people to wear cloth clothe covering, cloth coverance over their nose and mouth when they are indoor and outdoor public places. Where staying six feet from people who are not part of households is impossible. So it is now mandatory to wear masks or cloth covering over your face whenever you're in outdoor places. The governor also has announced that North Carolina would remain in safer at home phase two until at least Friday of July 17th. We have noticed that there is an upward trend nationally in COVID-19. As of noon today, there were 74,529 cases in North Carolina with 1,398 deaths and 982 cases currently hospitalized. And this is not good for North Carolina. On Friday, January 3rd, the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services reported the state's highest one-day number of confirmed cases at 2,099 cases reported. Hospitalizations also remained at a record high with 951 people hospitalized. As of today, Sampson County has reached 1,122 cases, and sadly, we have had seven deaths. And we reached that 1,000 mark last week, and that was, it was a milestone. But we reached that last week, and this has been since March, I think, the 6th or 7th that we've had that many cases here in Sampson County. We're averaging about 1,000 cases per day in North Carolina. Sampson County is averaging 28 to 35 to 40 cases per day with a 32% positivity rate. And it is important to note that our rate is approximately 31.62, which indicates that we are trending upward. And I think you've seen where the governor has those nine or 10 counties here in North Carolina. We were the next county, number 10, because of our positivity rate. So we're working on that, and hopefully we'll see some downward trends over the course of the next couple of weeks. Our mass testing event that we had on June 13th, we were able to serve 520 residents. We're trying to make testing readily available here in Sampson County. Of that 520 cases, 20 tests that we did, we did identify 29 positive cases, which is a rate of 5.6%. So that's pretty good, and we felt good about that, in that we did not have as many cases as we thought we would have here, have had here in Sampson County. So Kelly's going to talk to you a little bit about some other things we've got going on as far as COVID-19. Kelly?
So from mid-June, toward the end of June, we have tested two of our long-term care facilities. We're testing for COVID at 100%. So this means that all residents and staff are tested. We are pleased to report that all residents at both of these facilities tested negative for COVID-19. The results of these tests speak volumes about the hard work and dedication of the administration and the staff at these facilities to protect our most vulnerable population. Sampson County Health Department would like to extend a kudos to both of these facilities for their accomplishment. We are currently setting up testing for two additional long-term care facilities this week, and they will also be tested at 100%.
One other thing we'd like to mention is, in conclusion, we do, we remain ranked as second in the state for the highest COVID-19 rates per population. We are begging for leaders that are present to help us here in Sampson County, because the only way that we can bring our rates down is through the three W's. And I think you all have heard those three W's everywhere you may go. The three W's are wear a cloth face covering. We need to wait six feet behind others. And the third is washing hands for at least 20 seconds. And we're hoping that everyone will join us as we try to protect the citizens here in Sampson County. And we do welcome any assistance that we can get. Call us. We're trying to help folks plan in anything that we do. So one thing I'd like to also mention, if you'll give me one more minute, is that in Sampson County, our Hispanic population are disproportionately affected by COVID-19. The data being indicates that population, this population is more at risk due to the following factors: They tend to reside in multi-generational housing, work conditions, as they are often the frontline workers, and underlying health conditions and access to health care. So our county, in our county, approximately 69% of our total cases are Hispanic ethnicity. And we're working very closely with the farmworkers and all these other facilities to try to help them. We're not there to cause any issue, but we are trying to help them plan as to how we can attack this pandemic. So I do appreciate you all. If you have any questions, Kelly and I are here to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson, and thank you, Kelly. Commissioners, do you have comments or questions for Ms. Robinson?
I have one. Wanda, you gave us the total number of cases that we've had in Sampson, but you didn't address the amount of recoveries that we've had. How many active cases do we have at present?
So we can give you an estimate, I think probably around 3, 350 active cases, and we try, we're recovering every day. So probably about 3, 350 cases active right now.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Robinson, you and your staff, I want to tell you how much we appreciate all your hard work. It certainly has made a difference. We do have a lot of cases. You and your team have worked diligently, so we greatly appreciate all of your efforts.
Thank you very much.
If there are no questions or comments for Ms. Robinson, I'll move to Mr. Bass. Challenges of disaster shelter in a pandemic?
Good evening, everybody. I trust everybody can hear me. I just want to touch base a little bit, talk to you a little bit about some of the challenges that we could possibly see during the COVID-19 as far as disaster sheltering. Sampson County, we typically utilize 11 schools for emergency sheltering. Five of them are categorized as category rides as primary shelters, and six of them are secondary shelters. We also operate a special needs shelter and a pet shelter. During hurricane Florence, we housed approximately 3,300 evacuees in opening up all the shelters, all 11 plus the pet shelter and the special needs shelter. Sampson County Department of Social Services is the primary lead agency for shelters. But managing shelter and operations can take approximately 75% of our disaster workforce. We could easily utilize more personnel, but other staff are engaged in other necessary response activities. The DOC, Detention Center, Law Enforcement, the CRDP, EMS, and our paramedics, and the 911 Center. Given the seasonal workers present during hurricane season, we could see an influence in our shelters of seasonal workers, medium or non-English speaking folks. Language barrier can certainly be a challenge. Sampson County can expect an influence of evacuees from the coastal communities. Unfortunately, NOAA has predicted 13 19 named storms for the 2020 season. Three to six of those storms could be major storms. Sampson County has been diagnosed designated as a hotspot for COVID. As of June 24th, we ranked 75th in the nation among counties with the highest growth rate of COVID-19. We ranked 30th in North Carolina for the most rapid growth of COVID-19. So this was as of June 24th. That could have changed somewhat, but now. Given the prevalence of the virus, we must consider options for the best use of our shelter facilities. Establishing procedures for pre-registration, testing, methodologies for social distancing, isolation of potential cases, safe congregate feeding, sanitation protocols, and designating appropriate staffing for both health and mental health issues. Some of the recommendations that's been put out by the CDC and the American Red Cross. CDC's, their guidance recommends a standard of six-footed distance between individuals in any shelter, anywhere for that matter, that pertains to shelters as well. The American Red Cross recommends 120 square foot per person with a cot or 60 square foot per person without a cot. That's, that's pretty good, pretty good area. As we currently do, the distribution of cots should be restricted to most those in need, such as the elderly. Families will be allowed to cluster close together in shelters. Conversations must be had with the state, and we're in the process of having some of those conversations. Seeking redirection of coastal evacuees that may come into Sampson County. We had that to occur back during Florence, I believe. Some of our requirements are county personnel will complete a health screen on everyone entering a shelter. If shelter persists for multiple days, daily screening may be needed to be incorporated. Anyone with symptoms must be isolated within the shelter facility or diverted to a separate facility. Anyone that has tested positive must be isolated. Considerations must be made for any family members similarly exposed and will help staff to be dedicated solely to isolation areas. PPEs, personal protection equipment, shall be provided. Currently, I'm glad to say that right now the county is in good shape by having those PPEs enough to get us started in the shelter operations. So we're in pretty good shape with that. The county will work in partnership with school officials to arrange for appropriate safe congregate feeding. The assumptions are, the above recommendation requirements would likely place an operational hardship on the county due to limited available space for sheltering. The security of both human and material resources will be challenged prior to, during, and potentially after hurricane. Many ongoing COVID-related health activities are already mounting count, demanding countless staff hours and those of personnel that would be in high demand in a shelter during a pandemic situation. Any COVID-related illness, quarantine within our county staff could diminish available workforce. Workers posed during sheltering operations could diminish our post-disaster workforce. Public messaging regarding shelters during a pandemic will be critical. What to bring masks, hand wipes, bedding, so on. Screening expectations encourage encouraging alternates to public sheltering where appropriate possible. Very important that multilingual messaging will be critical. Outreach to large agricultural operations with seasonal workers will be needed to manage the influence of shelters. We will also need additional translators. We have been working with some of the farmers to talk to them, meet with them, and get some, maybe some type of idea of how many evacuees they may have to accompany our shelters. As you can see, we're facing many challenges here with shelter operations. I don't have to tell anyone that this COVID pandemic has put a, made a difference in all of our work. And if we were to have a hurricane, it would certainly be a severe hardship or a hard, I'll say a very hard challenge. But we are working on these challenges. We will, we'll continue to work on these challenges. I appreciate the opportunity to bring some of this to y'all's attention, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Bass? Mr. Bass, I believe that I'll take the liberty of speaking for everyone when I say that we appreciate your proactive approach. The sheltering is a challenge, and COVID-19 adds a tremendous burden to that sheltering. I am very appreciative of your proactive work, as I'm sure other commissioners are, because preparation is the key. So I appreciate you and your staff's hard work to get us ready.
Appreciate the support. We will continue to address these issues.
Thank you. Let us know what we can do to help.
Thank you.
All right. Item two, I would, at this time, I open a public hearing for rezoning R20-000002. I believe, Ms. Lane, I got the correct number of zeros in there.
You did.
One. So with that public hearing be opened, be, have been opened, Ms. Lane, I recognize you for a comment regarding this case.
Okay. We have three items on the agenda tonight. The first one, as Chairman Wooton stated, was R20-2. The following requests were addressed and unanimously recommended for approval by the Sampson County Planning Board at their June 15th, 2020 meeting. R20-2 is a rezoning request by ITAC 443 LLC to rezone approximately 254.6 acres located between I-40 and Preacher Henry Road from highway corridor to residential agricultural. Staff has prepared the following findings of factful consideration. Victoria Templeton has signed the rezoning application as Vice President of ITAC 443 LLC. The rezoning request will consist of five adjoining parcels that total approximately 254.6 acres. Attached is a recent survey map recorded in Book 104, page 53, in the Sampson County Register of Deeds Office, showing the intent to recombine all five parcels. The property is currently located in the Highway Corridor Overlay District. The property is located between I-40 and Preacher Henry Road in the basin area. The property immediately to the north, south, east, and west are currently in the residential agricultural district and the Highway Corridor Overlay, with the exception of one parcel located to the south that is zoned commercial. All adjacent property owners within 100 feet have been notified by mail, and the property has been posted. Whereas in accordance with the provisions of the North Carolina General Statute 153A-341, the Sampson County Planning Board does hereby find and determine that the recommendations of the ordinance amendment R20-2 is consistent with the goals and objectives of the Sampson County Land Use Plan and other long-range planning documents due to the fact this property is located in an area that is already predominantly zoned residential agricultural.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. Commissioners, are there any questions or comments? This time, hearing none. At this time, I close the public hearing. The public comments regarding this public hearing will be received up until 5:00 PM on Wednesday, July 8th. Ms. Holder, would you please state how comments regarding this public hearing can be provided to the board? And then the board will reconvene July night at 6:00 PM. And Susan, please tell our citizens where they can find that meeting information, please, ma'am.
Yes, sir. There are multiple opportunities for the issuance of comments with regards to these public hearings. They may be sent via email to me at susanh@sampsonnc.com. If someone is sending information to have it considered for a public hearing or public comment, if they will please put that in the subject line, so we'll be sure to catch that. They may also mail it to our office here, address it to Clerk to the Board at 406 County Complex Road, Clinton, North Carolina, 28328. If they would like to call and get additional information about how to do that, they can always call our offices at 592-6308. And of course, we will always post the login information for that meeting on our website and our social media.
Thank you, Ms. Holder. Greatly appreciate that. At this time, I would like to open a second public hearing of rezoning request for R20. And I'll go with your terminology, Ms. Lane, three.
That works for me.
Okay.
The second rezoning request is R20-3, a rezoning request by Warren Farming Company to rezone approximately 17.85 acres located between I-40 and William R. King Road in the Newton Grove area. The staff has prepared the following findings of factful consideration. R Gerald Warren has signed the rezoning application as President of Warren Farming Company. The rezoning request will consist of approximately 17.85 acres. The property is currently located in the Highway Corridor Overlay District. The request is to rezone approximately three acres alongside I-40 to commercial and the remainder of approximately 4.85 acres to residential agricultural. The property immediately to the north, south, east, and west are currently in the Highway Corridor Overlay District. And just outside of that is zoned residential agricultural. All adjacent property owners within 100 feet have been notified by mail, and the property has been posted. Whereas in accordance with the provisions of the North Carolina General Statute 153A-341, the Sampson County Planning Board does hereby find and determine that the recommendations of the ordinance R20-3 is consistent with the goals and objectives of the Sampson County Land Use Plan and other long-range planning documents due to the fact the request for commercial is adjacent to I-40, and the remaining is currently being farmed.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. Commissioners, are there any questions or comments from Ms. Lane? Hearing done, I will close the public hearing. Same rules as before, we'll take comments until 5:00 PM to 8:00. And we'll reconvene and act on this public hearing on the 9th at 6:00 PM. Ms. Holder, would you please, for the record and for the citizens that may have missed the information earlier, would you please state where to send, where and how to send comments, and where and how to find the meeting information?
Yes, sir. Comments can be sent via email to me at susanh@sampsonnc.com. Please put the words "public hearing" comments or "public comment" comments in the subject line. You can also mail them to Clerk to the Board, 406 County Complex Road, Clinton, North Carolina, 28328. For questions, persons can call 592-6308. And we will post the login information for the next meeting on our Facebook page and on our social media.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Holder. Greatly appreciate that. Had you received any comments to this point regarding public hearing one, R22, or R20-3?
No, sir. There have been no comments provided to date on any of the public hearings with regards to planning issues.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to open- Thank you. This time, I'd like to open a third public hearing, zoning request, R twenty dash four. The public hearing is now open, Ms. Lane.
The last item on my agenda is R twenty dash four is also a rezoning request by Warren Farming Company to rezone approximately seventy-nine point eight one acres located between I forty and William R. King Road in the Newton Grove area. Staff has prepared the following findings of factful consideration. R Gerald Warren has signed the rezoning application as President of Warren Farming Company. The rezoning request will consist of approximately seventy-nine point eight one acres. The property is currently located in the Highway Corridor Overlay District. The request to rezone approximately four point five acres along I forty to commercial with the remainder of approximately seventy-five point three one acres to residential agricultural. The property immediately to the north, south, east, and west are currently in the Highway Corridor Overlay District and just outside of that is zoned residential agricultural. All adjacent property owners within one hundred feet have been notified by mail and the property has been posted. Whereas in accordance with the provisions of the North Carolina General Statute one fifty-three A dash three forty-one, the Sampson County Planning Board does hereby find and determine that the recommendation of the ordinance amended R twenty dash four is consistent with the goals and objectives of the Sampson County Land Use Plan and other long-range planning documents due to the fact the request for commercial is adjacent to I forty and the remainder is currently being farmed.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. Uh commissioners, are there any questions or comments uh for Ms. Lane? Hearing none, I close the public hearing. Ms. Holder, uh we'll take comments up to July eighth at five and we'll act on this July ninth at six. Could you please first tell us if there's been any received comments? Secondly, how to get the uh public comment to you and where they find, where the citizenry will find the uh meeting information, please, and thank you.
Yes, sir. There have been no public comments filed with regards to this planning issue. For those who might wish to comment uh before the ninth, you may send them by email to Susan H. at Sampson N C dot com. Please put "public hearing" or "public comment" in the subject line. You may mail them to Clerk to the Board at four oh six County Complex Road, Clinton, North Carolina, two eight three two eight. The information will be posted tomorrow with regards to the login information about the next meeting on our website and our social media account.
Thank you so much, uh Ms. Holder. Greatly appreciate uh, appreciate all your uh work there. And Ms. Lane, appreciate you and the planning board for all their hard work. Thank you so very much. Uh this time, I'd like to move on to item three, uh A. And I would like to open a public hearing regarding the community development needs uh intent to apply for a C D B G dash N R funding. Uh this time, I would like to ask uh and this public hearing is open, I would like to ask uh Mr. Clark. This, and this is actually the second of two public hearings required in this matter, so this is the second one. Uh Mr. Clark, uh at this time, would you please uh make your presentation?
Yes, uh thank you. This is the, as you said, the second of two public hearings required for the Community Development Block Grant Funding Round. This is to assist our uh low-income citizens with housing needs in the county.
Anything else, uh? Mr. Anything else, Mr. Clark?
No, sir.
Thank you very much for your comments. I greatly appreciate that. Uh Susan, has there been any comments received to, at date and time?
Uh no, sir. No comments have been received with regards to um the C D B G project.
Uh commissioners, are there any questions or comments for Mr. Clark? At this time, I close the public hearing. Same rules apply. We would take uh uh comments to July eighth at five and act on July ninth at six. And Ms. Holder, would you please uh tell us uh everyone where they can send comments and how to find our meeting information?
Yes, sir. Email Susan H. at Sampson N C dot com in the subject line. Um it would be recommended that they put C D B G hearing. They may also send them by mail, uh addressed to the Clerk to the Board, four oh six County Complex Road, Clinton, North Carolina. We will make the information about the login um for the next meeting on our website and social media accounts. And since we will be asking you to adopt a citizen participation plan and resolution at your meeting on Thursday, we will call everybody's attention to the agenda materials that are also on our website should they wish to read that.
Thank you, Ms. Holder. Greatly appreciate that. Uh really appreciate, appreciate you. And at this time, uh just for the record, I want to make sure that I did close the public hearing. Uh I also would like to move to item three B. Uh public hearing regarding the naming of road, private roads. Uh this time, I open that public hearing, Ms. Holder.
Yes, sir. We have one road, private road that has been requested uh for naming. The road naming committee has reviewed the suggestions submitted by the property owners and we will rec, we would recommend that you name private road P V T sixteen thirty-nine five forty-nine as Camp Lane. There have been, there have been no uh public comments submitted on this matter, sir.
Thank you so much, Ms. Holder. Commissioners, are there any questions or comments uh for Ms. Holder? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. The public comments again can be received up until July the eighth at five and we will act July ninth at six. Ms. Holder, would you please uh speak to the uh process of getting comments and getting the information regarding the July ninth meeting?
Uh yes, sir. Email Susan H. at Sampson N C dot com. In the subject line, you may want to put "public uh private road name hearing" comments. You can also mail them to me at Clerk to the Board at four oh six County Complex Road, Clinton, North Carolina, two eight three two eight. We will put information as to the login for the next meeting should anyone wish to uh see the action the board is going to take um on our webpage and our social media accounts tomorrow.
Thank you. Uh thank you so much, Ms. Holder. Uh I'd like to move on to action, uh to item four, action items, A. Uh so uh tax settlement and charge tax collector, Mr. Johnson.
Yes, sir. Good evening. Um before being charged uh with collection of the current uh fiscal year taxes, the tax collector uh annually has to report a tax settlement to the governing board. Uh this year, the amount of unpaid property taxes is one million, four hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents. Uh that's about three hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty-two cents higher than last year. Uh tax collection percentage, uh last year, we finished a year with ninety-seven point six. This year, we're down to ninety-six point six. Uh and I will add, pre-pandemic, we were uh running along where we were the previous fiscal year in terms of tax collection percentage. Uh and like uh most other counties, uh after the pandemic, um the courts closed, we lost foreclosure abilities. We had finished our garnishments uh prior to the pandemic, so that was uh, that stayed in place. Uh we probably could have attached some of bank, bank accounts, but we felt that um under the current situation, uh that was just not the uh proper thing to do.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Appreciate that. Commissioners, are there any questions uh or anyone uh for Mr. Johnson? If not, is there a motion to accept the settlement and charges?
Mr. Chairman, I so moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Kivitt. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Godwin. Ms. Holder, would you please ca-
Uh Mr. Chairman, how do you vote?
Indian affirmative.
Vice Chairperson Lee, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Commissioner Parker, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Commissioner Godwin, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Commissioner Kivitt, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Mr. Chairman, the vote is recorded as, as unanimous.
Thank you, uh Ms. Holder, and thank you commissioners. Uh greatly, greatly appreciate that. Uh B is designation of voting delegate at the N C A C C Annual Conference.
Uh Mr. Chairman, the annual conference or the business session is going to be held at eleven o'clock A M. on August the sixth and is going to be a virtual meeting, so this will be the first time in history of the association, as far as I know, uh that we can stay at home and participate in the meeting and the, the board needs to choose a voting delegate. Uh I would point out to you that Mr. Kivitt is your representative to the board uh and you have the opportunity to select any of the commissioners and or, I guess, the county manager if the commissioners are not voting.
Thank you, Mr. Calzey. Uh is there uh, is there a commissioner volunteer?
Thank you, Mr. Kivitt. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Kivitt.
Well, I was, I was getting ready before I was appointed. Now, I'll be, I'll be happy to.
Thank you for volunteering, Commissioner Kivitt. You uh, you spent a lot of time and effort with the N C uh A C C and we appreciate all your, all your hard work. Uh I make a motion that we approve Mr. Kivitt as the voting delegate to the twenty twenty uh North Carolina Association of County Commissioners.
Second.
Duly made and seconded, uh Ms. Holder.
Uh Chairman Wooton, how do you vote?
Indian affirmative with joy.
Vice Chairperson Lee, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh Commissioner Parker, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Commissioner Godwin, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
And Commissioner Kivitt, you get a chance to back out, but how do you vote?
I'm gonna lose either way. I'm affirmative.
Uh Mr. Chairman, you have a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Ms. Holder. Congratulations, uh Mr. Kivitt.
Thank you.
At this time, uh at this time, I would like to recognize Vice Chair Lee.
Okay, we're at the time of the meeting, we appoint people to serve on boards and I really, really want to thank our citizenry that will step up and serve on these boards. It's a thankless task lots of times and these people dedicate time and hard work and I really, really appreciate it. Um I'm starting out with the convention visitors bureau, uh Board of Directors, I'd like to reappoint Rory Patel, Philip Bell, and Susan Richard to the boards.
I second.
Uh Ms. Holder, will you go down the row, please?
Certainly. Chairman Wooton, how do you vote?
Indian affirmative.
Vice Chairperson Lee, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Commissioner Parker, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Commissioner Godwin, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Commissioner Kivitt, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Mr. Chairman and Ms. Vice Chairperson, there is a unanimous vote.
Okay, we have a second one to attend to. I would like to uh move to appoint Daniel Ruggles to serve on the Workforce Development Board. Is there a second?
I second. I second.
Ms. Holder.
Certainly. Chairman Wooton, how do you vote?
Indian affirmative.
Vice Chairperson Lee, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Commissioner Parker, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Commissioner Godwin, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Commissioner Kivitt, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
There is a unanimous vote recorded.
Thanks very much.
I'm sorry, but go ahead.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lee, for all your hard work and dedication to uh, to fine citizens to help, help govern the county. So excellent. Thank you. Uh at this time, uh we're to item five, our consent, consent agenda. Is there anyone that wishes to discuss anything regarding the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I think you've got an item.
Oh, you know what? I, I did, I did. Let me back up if I could. Forgiveness for oversight, four D, um the walk-on item. Mr. Calzey, do you uh, do you have any further details for that walk-on item?
Right. I, I, I would just review for you briefly, so anybody listening will know what, what you're doing. What, what you have or what was emailed to all of the commissioners this afternoon were basically several items. Number one was the July sixth, two thousand twenty letter from Jill R. Wilson, which is talking about, basically talking about the engagement if we wanted to pursue their services. She's talking about a rate of three hundred dollars an hour for herself and then she's given the rates of associates that would be with her. She's also uh given the general terms of representation of what is involved and we did have the county attorney to look over that this afternoon. Uh and I think he would tell you that it is okay. Uh we also are proposing a budget amendment uh of twenty-five thousand dollars. Now, this is not a set fee in her engagement letter, this is just an estimate uh or guestment on our part to try to estimate what, what the cost would be. And, and as we sort of indicated in our introduction, uh now, um this is to serve as legal counseling connection with advising council about potential merger of the Sampson County School Systems and, and to approve the budget amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Calzey. Uh I really appreciate that. Uh are there questions or comments uh regarding four D, uh the engagement letter uh and the budget amendment? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Thank you, Kivitt. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh sounds good. Thank you, gentlemen, for uh your um motion and second. Uh Ms. Holder, at this time, would you please call the row?
Chairman Wooton, how do you vote?
Indian affirmative.
Vice Chairperson Lee, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Uh Commissioner Parker, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Commissioner Godwin, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Commissioner Kivitt, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Mr. Chairman, you have a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Ms. Holder. Thank you, Mr. Calzey. Commissioners, thank y'all. Um at this time, I believe I've got it uh where we can move to file the consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone wishes to discuss regarding the consent agenda? If not-
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I, I like to be brief. I, I just, I just, I don't, I, I'm out of J, I'm out of I and out of J, just to refresh my memory on that. Oh. Could someone, you know, explain that further to me because somewhere I've lost it in my memory of what we did with that and what I voted on that. Out of J, yes.
But thank you absolutely, Commissioner Parker. Uh not, not a problem at all. Uh and do we lose, is Mr. Johnson with us or who would like to feel- Uh and do we lose, is Mr. Johnson with us or who would like to field that question?
Uh which ones were that again? Adam I and J.
I, I and J, yes.
Um, item I is a uh property tax exemption uh request for pressed as ag uh energy. Um typically, the uh exemption time period is the month of January. Um they did not file that exemption until later in the year. Uh so once an exemption uh is requested, uh the tax administrator cannot uh uh authorize late application. Therefore, the board uh has to review and uh accept or deny the request.
How about number J, number J?
Um J is, is a request for um waiver of late list penalties for business personal property listing for circle-in forms. Uh this uh business owner uh requesting an extension in January timely uh up until April the fifteenth. Our office granted that extension. Uh but due to COVID nineteen um situation and circumstances, they could not file by the April the fifteenth deadline. Therefore, like many other counties are doing, uh the only relief they've got is to ask the board to uh re- uh request a waiver of late list penalty.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions or comments regarding the consent, consent agenda? If not, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda.
I second the motion.
Ms. Holder, thank you, gentlemen. Ms. Holder.
Uh yes. Chairman Wooton, how do you vote?
In the affirmative.
Vice Chairperson Lee, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Commissioner Parker, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Commissioner Godwin, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Commissioner Kivitt, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Mr. Chairman, you have a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Ms. Holder. Uh this time, I recognize our county manager, Mr. David Calzey.
Mr. Chairman, I hope, excuse me, I only have one thing for you this afternoon. Uh going back to Ronald's report, one of the things that we wanted to do was point out the continuing challenges we have with the pandemic. You, you know, what causes me particular ser- concern, and I, I, and, and, and I understand the reasoning for it. When we get into sheltering, if we're limited to the square footage that the state and Red Cross or whomever has put out, uh we will have a challenge in trying to find adequate sheltering for all of the, all of the people that may need our assistance. Uh we're just giving you that as information. We're hoping ongoing discussions will help give more clarity as this moves on. Uh but I'm also anticipating that we could potentially have some expenses that we may have to incur in order to better prepare ourselves uh for any potential st- uh storms or disasters that may confront us and involve.
Thank you, Mr. Calzey. Appreciate that. Any questions for Mr. Calzey? Uh hearing none, uh I will move to the public comment period. Uh Holder, I would ask you to uh uh review the rules regarding public comments.
Uh yes, sir. These comments that I am going to read to you were received via US mail in this case. Um by the, after our last meeting and before this prior, before tonight's meeting. Um we will read comments into the record and they will be reflected in the minutes accordingly for, as long as they do not um uh if they're not in violation of the board's standing rules with regards to items that can be considered, i.e. personnel matters. Both of these are eligible to be read and I will be glad to enter them into the record if you would like, sir.
Uh please enter them into the record, Ms. Holder.
Okay, um the first letter is from someone by the name of Jess, Jeff Robertson from Garland, North Carolina. And I will read his letter verbatim. Dear Mr. Calzey, uh the University of Kentucky is removing a controversial mural of enslaved Africans from its walls. In Louisiana, Nichols State University officials have scrapped the names of two college buildings dedicated to Confederate generals. In New Orleans, city lawmakers are renaming Jefferson Davis Parkway after Norman C. Francis, a civil rights pioneer. Outside Tampa, Florida, a sons of Confederate veterans have lowered a huge Confederate battle flag that has long been flown in view of two interstate highways. These are examples of what cities, cities across the country are doing in the wake of George Floyd's death at the hands of a Minneapolis police officer. It is time to do the same in our city of Clinton to remove the statutes and other, statues and other subtle homages to the Confederacy, starting with a Confederate soldier's monument outside the Sampson, Sampson County Courthouse in downtown Clinton. The inscription on this monument reads, "For a cause though lost, still just," which is incredibly sickening and offensive. It is time to get rid of that statue that honors a racist past and to begin the process of removing that offending statue. Quoting Indiana's mayor Joe Hogsit, "We must name these instances of discrimination and never forget our past, but we should not honor them. Thank you for your time." And I have one other letter that has uh been received from a Michael White from the Newton Grove area, and I will ask you indulgence. This is very long. Uh but I will read it um verbatim as it was received. I am Michael White from the Newton Grove area. I am writing you about the Confederate monument at the courthouse in Clinton. I believe it should stay right where it is. I will give you a s- small list on ways I believe this and hope you hear me out. Thank you for your time. First, the monument was paid for half from the state, so the North Carolina law protects it because taxpayer money went to it. Second, the monument dedication was held on the twelfth of nineteen sixteen according to contemporaneous newspaper accounts with an original Confederate battle flag placed in the bottom of the monument. The battle flag was one that the Confederate veterans from Sampson County had in the war. The third, the monument was put up for the dead who died in the war for their state and home county, Sampson County. These men were not all white. You had free black men from Sampson County who fought for the Confederate Army. They are Confederate veterans who this monument is for too. Fourth, we have laws to protect veterans monuments in this country, but a lot of people in the city forget we are are a republic, a land of law and order. Congress of the United States recognized this confeder- this Confederate veterans has US veterans and headstones for them were paid for by the VA, so the US laws for veterans monuments apply to this monument too. The last one, I think this is going to hit the nail on the head with the news article I seen and lot of people seen in Sampson County where you have the NAACP president of Sampson County talking that the monument was a white supremacy in front of the courthouse to remind the black men and women of Sampson County that they are not equal. I believe this man is wrong. I will not say his name, but it is not hard to find the news article. My response to this is easy. Did a Confederate flag ever fly over a slave ship? No. Did the Confederacy ever condone slavery? There is two parts to this from state to state. Yes, one country to another. No, that was their way of killing slavery off to end it. To monuments being some kind of white supremacy that holds no water. Because free black ma- men ran to join the Confederate Army and died in battle, this time we live in today, we cannot look to a monument and say, I am not equal because of this monument. That is the wrong way of thinking. Instead, we need to look at how we can help one another instead of taking down something that united white man and black man in the past. To do this, we should look at our community to do work there and not take down a monument to white Confederates and black Confederate brothers in arms. If anything, that monument should unite us today. But in today's times, we have more people trying to divide us as a country than unite us. They put us in groups, white, black, Hispanic, Native American, and it goes on. But we are Americans, all of us. These groups I named all have their own Confederate regiments. Look it up. They were united in the cause they fought. If you look on the monument, it says, "Fell in a cause though lost, still just, and died for me and you." We come to that cause, all groups. We should honor them and respect them and pray we can unite like they did. So I ask of you to share this with all the other Commissioners, please. I also ask of all the Commissioners, what is Sampson County going to be? A land of law or a land where the law is good only when it suits us? The law says monuments stay. Sincerely, Michael J. White. Those are all the comments that I have received via email or mail um by the methodology we had set forth, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Holder. Uh thank you for reading those. At this time, uh I would ask for a motion to recess, to reconvene July ninth at six PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Holder, call the roll and uh at the end of calling the roll, please indulge me by, by reminding us where we will be able to find that meeting information.
Yes, sir. Uh with regards to recessing to reconvene, how do you vote, Mr. Chairman?
In the affirmative.
Vice Chairperson Lee?
Affirmative.
Commissioner Parker?
Affirmative.
Commissioner Godwin?
Affirmative.
Uh Commissioner Kivitt?
Affirmative.
That vote is recorded as unanimous. And with regards to information with regards to the next meeting, it will be posted on our webpage tomorrow and of course presented on our social media. If anyone were to want to submit comments prior to that meeting day by five o'clock on the eighth, as you stated, Mr. Chairman, that may be done by email to Susan H at Sampson NC dot com. Please put in the subject line item that you either want to make a comment about a hearing or public comment. Um and they may be submitted also by mail to clerk to the board, four oh six County Complex Road, Clinton, North Carolina, two eight three two eight. And as always, if anyone has questions, they may call us at five nine two six three zero eight.
Thank you, Ms. Holder. Greatly appreciate that. Commissioners, thank y'all. And everyone, please stay safe and look forward to uh July ninth. Meeting adjourned.